So how soon after you accept the bid, when they go to work?
Well, we didn't put a rush or anything on it, hoping that giving kind of an open-ended completion date would entice people to bid on it. It was kind of easy with a telling job, because it's not a big project.
You start from the beginning, go straight down?
Thank you.
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay, everybody, are you ready to roll?
Almost.
Almost? How close is almost? What's the official time?
His time.
Seven oh one. Time to go, huh? Everybody ready? Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Mayor.
Today is Wednesday, November 6th. This is the regular meeting of the National Town Council. And for the record, the time is seven o'clock. We've had many things happen since we were last together. An election came, the election went. We had winners and losers, and my congratulations to the winners, my condolences to the losers. I understand the winner is here. Madam Mayor, et cetera, where are you? I can't see you behind the post. Move over so I can keep my eye on you. Anyway, we'll get ourselves organized at the first meeting in December. That's when we actually change and reorganize and do everything, so that's when the actual changeover will take place. Anyway, Brenda, where are you? I can't see you.
I'm right here.
Okay, step right there so I can see you. I want to thank you for running a very energetic campaign. And I hope that the kind of energy you put in your campaign, you'll put into your management. Because the town needs that kind of vibrancy and enthusiasm.
And I would, may I make a comment?
You may.
I just want to thank everybody that ran with the integrity that the races ran and made me even more proud to be a citizen of Nashville. Because nothing ugly was said about anybody, even when they tried to get us to say something. And I think it was with integrity, and I think that says a lot about our leaders.
Yep.
One's in and one's going out.
Yeah, I thought it was done pretty decently, anyway. Well, we're all friends.
Right.
Like, I've known you 40, what, 45? You're not that old. Anyway, I've known you a long time.
Yeah.
Five years. Okay, well, so much for the fun. Anyway, congratulations, everybody. All right, let's move on. We've got three sets of minutes to approve. Tuesday, October 1, 2019, and Tuesday, October 15, 2019, and Friday, October 25, 2019. Is the chair here motion minutes be approved as written, or are there corrections?
Same move.
It's been moved as second, the minutes be approved as written. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate yourself as saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Accordingly, the minutes are approved. Anyone sign up for public comment? There are no parties, nobody's signed up for public comment, so we'll move to items of consideration, which we got some that's sort of complex tonight, but we'll try to move as quickly as possible. The first thing we'd like to do, of course, is recognize Julie Spriggs, our planning director, for obtaining her certified floodplain manager certification. So if your house ever floods, call Julie. And we have a real fancy certificate to give to her. Julie, if you'll join me down front, we'll let a man put a picture of it in the paper. Or get it on YouTube. We got it before I did. This is the North Carolina Association Floodplain Manager. I know there's lots of such an organization, but anyway, whatever it is, she's now certified. She's certified floodplain manager, that's the CFM program, by the way. And she's a certified association, takes floodplain managers. In recognition of having met the national certification requirements, board of directors of North Carolina Association of Floodplain Managers has awarded the title of Certified Floodplain Manager with Julie Ann Briggs, Eve Briggs. Certified Floodplain Manager. In recognition, in recognition there are all this certificate issued this day, October 11, 2019, in Charlotte, Utah, on January 1, 2021, certification number, certificate, all kinds of CFPs. Congratulations, dear. And what this means is she is now our administrator for floodplain grants and grants from the law, the government agencies who send this money, and keeps it going out of there. Want to take it, please? Now, the next item is not quite so simple. We have a consideration request from Doris Cobb Robertson, which deals with a situation concerning a right-of-way across her property at 1,000 South Alston Street, that she wanted to address the council regarding compensation for a sanitary sewer easement she granted to Town of Nashville in 2009. Is she here tonight?
Betty Brown.
What?
Betty, her daughter, is here to speak.
Okay. Would you come to the podium, please, and state your name and address, and tell us what your issue is?
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
Great, glad you could be here.
Thank you. My name is Betty Brown. I am the daughter of Doris Robertson.
Okay, thank you.
And the reason that we are here, and like you said, in 2009, my mother granted the Town of Nashville an easement across two parcels of her land.
Right.
And she was told that she would be compensated for it, however, she was never compensated for it. About maybe a month and a half ago, the septic tank at the house, at the property, collapsed. And the only reason that we knew that she was not compensated the way that she was supposed to have been was because she felt, or she thought, that the house was hooked to the sewer.
Right.
And it wasn't.
Right.
So I decided to check into it. Not only was she supposed to have gotten compensated by being hooked up to the Town of Nashville, she was also told that she would be given $2,500 as well for the town to hook up to her property, two parcels, which she never got.
Okay, well, we've looked at the deed on this thing, and it talks about a valuable consideration, but doesn't tell us what it is. So we, and we're not sure what that goes with. But going back into recall, and Kevin was involved in this thing at the time, he might want to help me recall this a little sharper. But as I remember from the discussion, your mother was going to be hooked to the water system, to the sewer system? And I thought she was.
She did, too.
And that was, I thought she was. Until this happened, I thought everything was going along lovely. I'd never heard anything about the money compensation. But the, I found out later in talking with Randy, that connection does not necessarily mean physical connection, but having a sub or stub into a pipe so you can hook to it at some point in time. Well, I did not know that, you know, that was the case. I thought she was hooked up to the sewer at that point in time. And I'm sorry all of this has happened, but I think you do have an issue with the fact that since I've heard, this is word of mouth, it's not on paper, that there was an agreement that she would hook to the sewer, I think we owe you some money.
Okay.
I don't know about the $2,500 extra cash, but the covering for your damages, which I thought was an oral agreement, which I guess is binding, I think we owe you some cash. Counsel, what's your opinion? No opinion?
I was wondering if Kevin could shed some light on this.
Honestly, it was a long time ago. I was involved in the project from the standpoint of the design of the sewer line. And I do remember going to Ms. Doris' house and getting her to sign the deed. But other than that, I don't remember any of the negotiations or discussions between the town and what was talked about. So other than that, I don't really have a lot of memory of what we agreed to and what wasn't agreed to. A lot of that was done through Jamie and the town manager at the time to negotiate something like that. We were kind of on the design side, being told what to do and where to go. The sewer line was actually, at one time, across the back of all the properties, and then we actually moved it onto the 3M law property at some point.
Right.
So I think there were some negotiations of how the sewer easement was to be done, and then obviously it was relocated, caused some of those negotiations. But I don't remember a lot about it.
Yeah, there was complications across the lots. So then to move off the lots on the land, on the wet land behind it, which took some different permitting. But my information came from casual conversation I had with Preston at the time. So that's just different.
He was definitely more involved than we were on that side.
Yeah. And I took whatever he said at face value. So, other opinions?
Does anybody know what the other homeowners who had to sign easements like this received? If it was just the same hookup?
Well, there was only one other person involved, because we were off the land, we owned only two of the lots on the end.
And that's both of them belong to us.
And I don't know, I knew nothing about the other person. But Ms. Robertson's name wasn't mentioned in the conversation I had with Preston. The other person was just not in the conversation. That's just the meaning of it, yes.
I did talk to Preston, and, you know, as Kevin said, it was a long time ago, which is exactly what Preston said. But he said when they had talked to the property owners, they had, in exchange for the easement, the town was going to put in a stub for each one of the five property owners along there, so that in the future, when their septic's failed, they could connect from their house to the town sewer. Now, I don't believe it was probably ever explained, there were some assumptions, most likely, out there. Definition of connection was probably never really defined. A connection to a homeowner probably means from the main to the house. What it was with the town's administration at the time, and Jamie confirmed this, too, it was a connection point in the backyard, some distance away from the house. That's what was agreed to be given in exchange for the easement. And that's what each one of the properties along there, all five of the houses, have one of those in the back. And the easement is with Doris, and of course, 3M, and Braswell. That's where the sewer line ultimately ended up, because some of Doris' neighbors to the north wouldn't, didn't agree to give the easement. So that meant then the town had to go to Plan B, which was move across the property line to the west and get it from Braswell and David Rose.
Yeah. So here's where this thing kind of bogs down. We've got two opinions here. One, one is the stub thing we were talking about, but Preston told me that there was an actual physical hookup. That was the plan to happen. And I thought it had happened, so I, until this came up, I did not realize that. So we got an issue here we need to resolve.
Mayor, I wasn't, I wasn't on the council at that time, but listening to what everybody's had said, and looking at the material that was presented to us, what I would research, there was obviously a mix-up in interpretation as to what they meant for a hookup.
Right.
And like you say, the citizenship, Ms. Robinson.
Robinson, thank you.
Ms. Robinson was under the impression that it was a physical hookup, and I guess in the town's side of the house, we figured it was a stub hookup.
I thought it was saying the physical hookup, yeah.
But you just saying that you were under the impression that it was a physical hookup, I would think, just out of, just out of good faith to Ms. Robinson, that the town maybe should just reimburse her for the actual cost of her having to do that hookup.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That's my feeling.
And what was that cost?
Betty, do you know what that cost was?
Twenty-five?
Twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, I think it's twenty, I think it's twenty-seven, 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 twenty-eight hundred. Said I put it in here.
Seems like I saw twenty-seven somewhere.
I thought it was in here.
It was about twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred dollars. But I can get the figures for you again. But let me clarify something. For clarification, one, my mother was called, and she had to go to the Four Seasons office to sign the note. No one came to her house. And if she said that she was told that she was going to get $2,500, that's why her, to others two sisters decided to sign, because they didn't think it was proper, they said, to give up two parcels of land for nothing in exchange for it. Okay? So having said that, I want to clarify that she was told that, I believe she was told that, and looking at easement, it is my understanding, when you get an easement from someone, some form of money has to be exchanged?
Well, the easement does say valuable consideration.
Consideration.
But it doesn't say what.
It doesn't have to be cash, it can be the fact that they would hook you up to the sewer. That's a proper consideration.
But they didn't do it.
Yeah.
Or give you a stub.
Yeah, yeah. And what I'm looking at as valuable consideration would be the hookup.
What?
And that's the conversation I had with Preston, I vaguely remember just talking with him, about the sub thing or whatever, so that's my impression.
I'm with Larry. I think if it was y'all's impression and your impression, that it was going to be actual physical hookup, it needs to be physical hookup.
That was my impression. So where are we? You mentioned money?
I mentioned the reimbursement of what it cost her physically to get hooked up.
Right, upon receipt of whatever it cost you.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Before she's had to carry out a pocket.
Yeah. Is that a motion?
I will put it in formal motion.
Okay.
Second.
There's a second, okay. It's been moved as second, and we reimburse it up to, what, $2,700?
Get us a definite figure as to what it was.
Or the receipts.
Get some receipts.
Yeah, the receipts would be nice, if we could get them.
We can get those.
Okay. Hold on, we're not through yet. Okay, we've had a motion and a second on this, to look at the receipt to use that number. And is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate yourself as saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay.
Thank you, Betty.
You get your money. Thank you, ma'am. Sorry, sorry we had this confusion, but wait things go sometime in government. Okay, item number C, consideration.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure that we're quite sure this situation may hit us again down the road, that we be more clear on what we mean as a hookup.
Yeah.
Whether it means a stub or what.
In whatever easement agreement we use, it should be spelled out.
It needs to be spelled out, so we won't run into.
Yeah, we need to identify the substance of the valuable consideration.
Right.
Yeah, that should be done. Okay, item number C is consideration of resolution 2019-23, a resolution awarding a construction contract for the aviation lift station abandonment project. And Kevin's got those numbers. And Kevin, will you come forward and identify yourself for the record, please, and tell us what you found for us?
Certainly will. I'm Kevin Vornell with Stocks Engineering, and I have a handout for you guys.
It's only four and a half percent over by.
What you have is the bid opening tabulation sheet, and over the past 60 days, we have solicited bids for the aviation lift station abandonment project. We have four bidders that turned in a bid, with the lowest responsible bidder being Weaver's Asphalt and Maintenance Company at $169,995. And our original engineering estimate was $162,688. So we, the lowest bid coming around four and a half percent over the engineering budget, but it is still underneath the budget that we carried for the total project. So we, Stocks Engineering recommends the council awarding the contract to Weaver's Asphalt and Maintenance Company for $169,995.
Okay. Chair here motion, we approve the recommendation?
And our initial numbers was $190,308, is what we put in there starting, right?
With 200 is what we carried.
200.
The total, that's right.
That's what I made, Mayor.
A motion has been made that we accept the recommendations. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved as second, we accept the recommendation of the engineers to contract with Weaver's Asphalt and Maintenance to abandon the aviation lift station and grab it away. Is there any discussion?
Well, that's probably the local company there, eight quarters over in Sharpburg.
Yeah, yeah.
They've been around quite a while, and I think it's pretty reputable.
Yeah, it's a good group. Okay, other discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate yourself as saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, start digging. Yeah, we've got to finish the resolution on that, too. Thank you. If you'll follow me, it's the last page of the resolution, we need to get this done. It's awarding a construction contract for the aviation lift station abandonment project. Says whereas the Town of Nashville has received three competitive, four now, four competitive quotations for the aviation lift station abandonment project, with the following contractors, Ed Braswell, Andrew's Grading, Wellington Contract, and Weaver's Asphalt. Whereas the town engineer, Stocks Engineering, has verified the bid from Weaver's Asphalt and Maintenance in the amount of $169,995, and confirmed that it is a responsible and responsive and responsible bid. Whereas Stocks Engineering has recommended awarding the project to Weaver's Asphalt and Maintenance. Now therefore, bid resolved by the Town Council of Town of Nashville, North Carolina, as follows. Section one, that the aviation lift station abandonment project is hereby awarded to Weaver's Asphalt and Maintenance in the amount of $169,995. And section two, that the mayor and town clerk are hereby directed to execute the contract with the contract for the destruction of the aviation lift station abandonment project. This is passed and approved on the 6th day of November, 2019, with appropriate signatures and attestations. Now, it's a motion to approve the resolution.
So may.
Been moved as second, is there any discussion? Okay, there being none, all in favor, indicate yourself as saying yes.
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 Now you can start digging. All right.
He's already gone.
Already gone? He's already digging, huh? Okay, the next item is a presentation of a certificate of sufficiency for an annexation petition, 2019-02. This is the report that we got in from Mr. Creach up on First Street. Said on October 30, 2019, the Town Council approved a resolution, 2019-24, directing the town clerk to investigate the sufficiency of annexation petition, 2019-02, requesting the annexation of property. I have investigated the petition, have found the petition is signed by all owners of the real property lying in the areas described in the petition in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 168-31. And this is, has come from our clerk, and all is in order, and they recommend that we approve the certificate of sufficiency, which says to the Nashville Town Council of the Town of Nashville, North Carolina, I Lou C. Bunch, Town Clerk, to hereby certify that I have investigated petition number 2019-02 attached here, too, and have found as a fact that said petition is signed by all owners of real property lying in the area described therein, in accordance with North Carolina General Statutes 168-31. And witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and affixed the seal of the Town of Nashville this 31st day of October, 2021, signed Lou Bunch, Town Clerk, with the official seals. And now we'll entertain a motion to accept the certificate of sufficiency.
Same move.
And it's been moved to accept this certificate.
Second.
And it's been seconded, is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate yourself as saying yes.
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 Opposed, no? Okay, the certificate has been accepted. Now we need to set a date, considering the public hearing for the resolution. Okay, who, are we going to have an agenda meeting on Thanksgiving Eve? We know about. Okay.
No, we were, staff was planning to make sure that all business, if we did have any, and at present time, we don't know of any.
It'll be done before that.
Either that, or we did put it on the December 3rd meeting agenda.
Okay, all right, all that's said and done, the next time we meet will be December 3. Could we arrange a public hearing before the regular meeting to resolve that problem at that point in time? You've already got that set out to go?
We have a resolution doing that.
Resolution that effect, okay. You want to approve that now?
Yeah.
Okay, that is?
The next item.
The next item?
Consideration of resolution 219, fixing a public hearing date for the annexation. Number 4E.
4E, this stuff is all mushed up on mine. Okay, and here it is, sure enough. Okay, let's approve the resolution, then we'll move on. Resolution 2019-25, fixing the date of public hearing on the question of annexation pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-31, annexation petition, 2019-02. Says whereas a petition requesting annexation of the area described herein has been received, and whereas the Town, the Nashville Town Council has by resolution directed the town clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the petition, and whereas certification by the town clerk as to the sufficiency of the petition has been made, now therefore being resolved by the Nashville Town Council of the Town of Nashville, North Carolina, that section one, a public hearing be held on the question of annexation of the area described herein, will be held at Nashville Town Council chambers at 7:00 PM on December 3, 2019. Section two, the area proposed annexation is described as follows. Property owner William W. Creach, and then we have the meets and bounds of the property. And section three, notice of the public hearing shall be published in the Nashville Graphic, a newspaper having general circulation in the Town of Nashville, at least 10 days prior to the date of the public hearing, adopted the 6th day of November, 2019, with appropriate signatures and attestations. Now, the chair entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Same move.
And it's been moved, and seconded, we approve the resolution. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate yourself as saying yes.
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 Opposed, no? Okay, December 3 it is. Okay, the next item we have is consideration of a tree ordinance for Tree City USA designation. We had a public hearing on this thing before, and there's much discussion about it, and there's still some issues at hand that have not yet been resolved, principle of which is the constitution of the tree board. There's been some discussion that the tree board should be independent from the Parks and Recreation Board, and that some of the people on the Parks and Recreation Board are actually not members of our town, and there may be problems with people out of town telling folks in town how they can trim the trees. And it would be good to have an independent board established for that. We can go back to the drawing board and get this created, if you'd like to. Is that the wish of the council?
Well, I spoke with Julie earlier, I think she'll have a good compromise for us here.
She got what?
A compromise.
Okay, let me have it.
All right, so, can you hear me? Okay, so, for the tree board, what we would like to do at the staff level is have the tree board established under the PRCR for the initial adoption, and amend it in the future, we can come back in January or February, amend it in the future to make sure that we have enough people volunteering for the tree board, and we can have form met, that way we can meet this December deadline for our Tree City project. So what we've done since March, when we, when council approved that we would try for the application for Tree City, that the work that we've done in the subsequent months of planting the trees and getting the volunteer hours in, that that can count towards our application this year. If we don't pass the ordinance tonight, we will not, we will not make the deadline for the Tree City designation this year. So what we can do is, if the council is comfortable with it, what staff was planning on was having the PRCR be the initial tree board, because they already are set, they already have form, they already have the set meeting time, and we can look at getting volunteers, stepping that tree board with volunteers in the future to make sure that we have form, and that the meeting times can be set, so we can amend that in the future. But if we table this tonight, we will not be able to go forward with the Tree City application for this year.
Julie, could you give us the names of the board members?
Of the PRCR?
Yes.
Marguerite, can you help me with that?
Yeah.
Because I'm not, I'm up to nowhere.
Yep.
Thank you.
Kirby Winstead, he's currently serving out the rest of his term, he is not going to reapply for another one, and that would be the only person that currently resides outside of town limits. George Jeffries, who resides in Indian Trail area. Mary Richardson. Lynn Hobbs, who we will have to now replace, but we've now put forth applications. And then Ms. Burns would be our council liaison. But everybody else lives in town limits, except for Kirby Winstead, who would be.
And who is your council liaison?
Me.
Kate, that's what I thought you said.
I said Ms. Burns.
Well, it came out there.
Sorry, Ms. Burns.
Actually, that's okay, okay.
Okay, so four.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Okay, can the council live with a compromise?
Yes.
Okay, works for me. Chair here motion, we approve the three orders?
I move that we approve the orders.
Okay.
With the compromise.
With the compromise.
With the compromise that was stated.
Very good. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
And a second, is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate, so we say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, I think that passed. Okay, and item G is a consideration of downtown strong laws, which deals with the construction of our advisory board, according to the recommendation now for the planners. The town participated in the downtown strong initiative this year as part of the review of our downtown, a restructuring of the MSD advisory board was suggested to help with the education outreach and participation of the district members. The town partnered with NC Main Street and Rural Planning Center to facilitate a series of meetings where we reviewed the structure, attendance, and goals of the MSD. New bylaws were drafted, admission statement was crafted through public participation in group settings, and new name was suggested to help focus the group. The tax proposed bylaws includes expand the board membership so that the quorum can be more easily met, includes a committee structure to help garner participation, includes admission statement and clear expectations of members to help ensure the goals of the group. And I'm sure all of you have read this set of bylaws over here. There's one area though, that needs to be cleared up that hasn't already been done, is under section E, in, under Article 3, section E, which speaks to the town, the town board of commissioners. We haven't been a commissioner of government since 1987, so that should be the town council in some, in some form.
And that occurs two more times.
Yeah.
On page four.
Yes, and there were, are repetitive times.
It won't take much to clean that up.
There's a, as far as typos that we're talking about, it references Franklin instead of Nashville, Franklinton, sorry, on page four, the top, number one.
We can take care of that also, okay?
Yes, and then some just general questions I have. So, when we're talking about what these bylaws govern and what this board is going to do, is it talking about all of downtown in general, or is it specific to the district? Can we do this, since we're adding that additional tax for the municipal service district, and now we're adding, we're adding on people who have qualified backgrounds that we want, Nashville residents, people outside of this district? And we're, and I know you're doing it to make quorum, and I know you're doing it to have additional voices as to what downtown should be. So I guess I want to know how broad we're speaking here, and I want to make sure that expending of funds, that we're still keeping that in the MSD, so that we're not taking those tax dollars away.
That is what's going to happen. So, the MSD district boundaries, we can look at them in the future and see if you want to rearrange them or add any businesses that would like to come in. That is an option that the council has every year, to look at the bylaws and look at the district and make sure that you're comfortable with what the district is doing. But the downtown Nashville Strong Committee or Advisory Board will be an advisory board, the MSD is a tool for that board, and the district will be the MSD district. So the name change is a focus to help include people, because while the district is where the tax district is, the downtown is for everyone. And so we want everyone to have a say in what is going on in the town, so they feel engaged and a part of it. But the tax district and the tax district dollars that we still have will be used in the boundary that we have designated as the MSD. So the MSD is still existing, and the MSD is still the tax district, but we're focusing that the town efforts to make it, the MSD is a tool, and not just the MSD members as the advisory board. That way we have more buy-in and more options from people to support the downtown.
So how does that work logistically, if we have a really good idea to invigorate downtown, but it's occurring outside of the municipal service district? So we say, okay, we're going to be expending funds from, say, the general fund budget? How does that, how, are we like muddying it? Do we have to have two separate, two separate boards, one MSD board and one downtown strong board?
I don't think it muddies it, and I don't think we need to have two separate boards. And the reason why I don't think we need two separate boards is we're having trouble stacking the one board. So creating two boards, then we're gonna have trouble stacking both boards. So getting volunteers to come in and getting quorum to, for one board is hard enough, which is why we're trying to expand the area. The majority of the members will still be in the MSD proper.
Okay.
So the majority of the members will still have that tie-in, have that tax district, will still have that, that base for them. If we wanted to do something outside the district that would still benefit downtown, we're still delineating the downtown area as that district. So we would have to look at redoing those boundaries if you wanted to expand the downtown area into another area. So basically, the downtown area for the MSD is the business district.
Okay.
And if we wanted to include something outside that business district, we could look at that, but right now it is the business district.
Okay.
And that's what we're looking at as the core downtown.
Julie, will we run into, will we run into any problems if we did decide to extend it outside the MSD district, as far as the taxes that they're paying into that, into that fund?
It would depend on what we're using the money for and how we're separating it out. So I would need a project example to see what you would like to do, and then we could look at the legalities of it. If you're just looking to have a festival somewhere outside of the district, that's one thing, and that doesn't necessarily muddy the waters, because we're still benefiting the district, and it's not a, and a direct improvement, but if you're looking for direct improvements, sign in, different sidewalk projects, or lighting projects, or a facade project, grant programs that are gonna be outside the district, then that might muddy the waters.
That would, that would.
The bounty's for that.
Right.
But you wouldn't necessarily put a facade on a residential home, so the district is still the business district. So it would depend on what your projects that you're thinking, but most projects are gonna be in the business district itself. The residential district down the street from CBS and Ondan, there's a definite line between the business side of CBS and back this way towards town hall, and CBS towards the United Methodist Church in Cooley Manor, where the more residential and the larger homes are, the, the street runs, there's a different, you know, a different line where the fellowship starts. So it depends on what projects you're talking about. But we can, you know, if you have something specific in mind, we can discuss that, but if you're just trying to prepare for the future, we can cross that over and get there.
Chair here motion, we approve the, the consideration?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I reluctantly second. I mean, cause I'm, I'm looking it down the road, it may, it may get muddy down the road, and I, I don't think we need to go into it with it already in our mind, and if we go outside the MSD district, where's that funds coming from?
Right.
I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna let them do, benefit from that, then I think they should be just like the rest of the merchants and, and pay that additional.
Maybe the answer is, and I guess your, your point is where, what it comes down to, are we doing a festival, or are we doing a facade? So if we start.
If it's a festival, if it's permanent, I don't see a problem.
Exactly, exactly.
But if it's, if it's a facade issue, or.
Right.
A permanent, a permanent beautification, then I, I think that's where we're gonna.
Then maybe it's a recommendation that's made by this board, and then that's something that we have to consider and, and talk about coming out of our budget.
What we're gonna talk about, if you are or not?
And any projects that the MSD board, which would now be, if you approve, is the downtown Nashville Strong program, there then, it's still an advisory board, it still has to come to you for any funding approvals and for any project approvals.
Right.
So we would be able to look at it at times, see what projects are on the list, and what we'd like to do, to make sure that the funds are being used wisely and in accordance with general statutes. Another thing is that in the bylaws, we're reviewing these bylaws every year. So if we get started, and we find that we need to massage them a year down the line, we can massage them as needed. These again, are bylaws, it's a policy, they are not, they're not set stone forever and a day. They can be looked at, massaged, and as we grow and get comfortable with these, we can change these as times go on. What we're trying to do right now is make it easier for our members to make quorum, so we can get this running like a downtown association, so that we can get funding, get programs, and, and get the revitalization projects underway. And our focus right now will be on the MSD district proper, that we already have set in place.
Other comment? Okay, well, the motion, a reluctant second.
And let me clarify my, clarify my reluctance.
Okay.
I don't, we've already got this stuff rolling, and I don't want, I don't want to be a hindrance to anything that would improve downtown Nashville, or Nashville as a whole, I don't want to be a hindrance for not doing that, but I want to be fair to the people that are already in the MSD district and been there for a couple of years, paying in, as opposed to somebody that's right two blocks down, down the street, being added into the board, and then think that they're gonna get the very same benefits that the MSD district is getting, which they should not until we go back and revisit this and make some additions, or some corrections. That's why I was reluctant.
Okay. With your reluctance explained, all in favor of the motion, indicate, so we say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Yes.
No? Two and two?
I'm, I'm yes.
You are yes? Okay, yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, okay.
Don't need to speak loud. Okay, well, the issue do pass. Thank you. Which brings up the next item, H, which is consideration of downtown strong advisory board appointment. If we look under this, under section H. I think it's H, if I'm correct. Said, we've had a person leave the board, and Susan Phelps has submitted an application to fulfill this unexpired vacant seat, and the appointment would now be set to expire on June 30, 2021, with the restructuring of the MSD advisory board into the downtown Nashville Strong advisory board, and the bylaws we just approved allows for persons of non-residency and outside the MSD district to serve on the board if they have special qualifications and skills that can be offered. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve, approve the consideration.
So moved.
It's been moved, and.
Second.
Seconded, we approve Susan Phelps as a board member. Is there any discussion?
Susan, are you, are you a Nashville resident, or are you coming in on the board as a representative county?
She's not here, is she?
Susan's not here, unless she's behind, behind that post.
I guess she's not here.
She's not here.
So, I think Julie, would be best to talk about Susan's qualifications, and what she's done for us so far.
Okay.
So, Susan works at the county.
Right.
She's in, she's part of the economic development structuring of Wake County. And so as an employee of Wake County, she works in the MSD district. And if you work in the MSD district, for somebody who has a business in the MSD, which the county qualifies, you are allowed to be on the board, that is the qualification. So you don't have to, on the county, you don't have to live in town, you have to be employed and work within the MSD to be on the board, and she qualifies for that. She's also very skilled in economic development and retail, she has been phenomenal in helping get the inventory underway for our downtown inventory that we are currently working on. She has been a great help in getting this footage, the prices, and we're working on building that inventory, so that we can start reaching out to different businesses to recruit them to come. That's part of what we're working on with Hillary and Bruce. Just to refresh, Hillary has been here and should be here in January, to give you an update on what we're doing, which for you would be kind of something, but to work on what the revitalization and recruitment for downtown, what businesses we can support, and what our vacancies would be able to hold. So Susan has been integral in helping build that inventory, she has been to every MSD meeting we've had, she would be able to make the meetings easily and help us meet our quorum.
Well, I have, I have no doubt that she doesn't have the ability to do it, and I know she's done a lot of work for us, but just for clarification for the record, I believe when you, we mentioned where she worked, I think you said Wake County.
Oh, I'm sorry, Nash County.
Thank you.
Yeah, she's Nash County.
I'm still.
No, she said, she said she worked.
I heard her say Wake County.
You're not in Sebelene anymore.
I know, I know. This is so much better over here.
Okay.
Good answer.
Okay. Let's see, we already got that approved, right?
Yes, I need a vote.
Need a vote.
Need a vote.
Alright, all in favor, indicate, so we say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? I like the stronger voices, thank you. Okay, item I is something we've been, had on the books for the longest kind of time, which is interlocal agreement in Nash County on the Elm Street Storm Sewer Project. Just a little background, after Hurricane Florence, the town of Nashville and Nash County submitted a storm sewer mitigation project to the North Carolina Department of Commerce, the project was awarded $455,114 from the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program, and $500,000 from the Golden Leaf Foundation. At the time of submission, it was agreed that Nash County would be lead agency and construct the project, and the town would accept the project upon completion, and would own and maintain it thereafter. So what we've got to do now is approve an interlocal agreement with Nash County for the construction of the Elm Street Storm Waters, Storm Sewer Project, and the county commissioners agreed on this at their meeting yesterday. They also have to approve the design of construction and engineering, and the project requires no match, either town or county. Just to give you a little background for the audience, this thing is over on Elm Street, it's under the pavement, starting behind the jail, and goes up the hill, up past behind the old Baptist church. Part of the parking lot behind the county administration building is washing out under it, part of it behind the jail is going under, part of the, the streets going under, whole thing is going down, and it's gonna take a lot of work to get it done, so that's got to be fixed. And once it gets fixed, it will still be part of the county, town's inventory of streets, although the county's gonna do the administration of the work. Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with the county.
So moved.
Then moved, and seconded, is there any discussion?
I had a question about the subrecipient agreement and the Golden Leaf agreement. If we could just get copies of those, because they're incorporated in here by reference, so I'd love to know what's being incorporated in.
Oh, we got all that, yeah, yeah.
And then my second question is liability. So, after the completion of the system replacement, the town shall own, operate, and maintain everything with that. What happens in the meantime, when the county's taking over doing construction work and things like that?
It's covered with our liability.
Okay, so we're responsible.
They're in charge of it.
Yeah, we're clear.
Okay.
Yeah, we're clear.
As the lead agency, they have responsibility, obligation, and responsibility for it.
Yeah, so they're clear.
And I'll get you those agreements.
Thank you.
Other comments?
They're rather thick, so.
If this goes over budget, who's responsible? If this goes over budget, who's responsible?
Well, between, I, I'm assuming we would get together, Louise, and, and talk between the, the county and the, the town council, how much over it was, and probably split that 50/50. The amount of the grant awards exceeds the estimated project cost by about 20,000. And Stocks Engineering was awarded Tuesday, yesterday, at the commission meeting, the engineering on this project. So, to answer your question, if that comes up, we'll, we'll have to address it.
Right.
Other comments? Okay, all in favor, indicate, so we say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? And that is done. Okay, item J, update on the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources proposal with the county. Marguerite, are you in on this? Okay, you come forward and do this for us. For the record, tell us who you are.
Marguerite Bishop, Director of Parks, Recreation, Cultural Resources, County of Nashville.
Thank you.
You have documentation in front of you that takes and outlines the preliminary proposal. What we are currently looking at and exploring is the option for Nash County Parks and Rec to run our team field athletics out of Glover Park, and so, in a similar manner as I do in Red Oak, and Spring Hope, and Bailey and Middlesex, then that will take, and it'll free up some of our budgeted money, part of our budget, to then reallocate into other programming areas, so that it then takes and expands programming areas and opportunities for town and town residents and those living outside the town, while we're. the town, while we're still affording them the opportunity to play athletics. And so we don't have duplication of effort and services between the county and us, the town, and you have an expansion of services without an expansion of cost.
How much worry would it save the town?
Not looking to save the town any money. Just going to ask if you funded at the same level. We're just switching what types of programs we're actually offering, allow us to expand...
And they will be?
They will be. After school programming, summer camps, introductory dance classes, family game nights, school readiness programs, health and wellness programs, balance, stretch and move programs. The possibilities are endless at this point in time.
These are pretty erudite things. You've got a staff destiny, how many people do you have to hire?
So currently, if you look at the proposal, is that you would have me as the director, then you would take and you would rehire a recreation supervisor, and then most of the other stuff will be done with part-time contract work that you're going to contract with instructors and everything that will come in and be able to run dance classes, yoga classes and everything, and then some other part-timers that will be able to help with admin and everything.
Explain this after-school program to me. Is that like daycare?
It can, it depends on which way you set it up. It can be kind of like daycare, which the town doesn't have a whole bunch of when it comes to after-school, like school-aged children. But it can also be a supplementing schoolwork, trying to get kids working on grade level and instituting more of that type of net, safety net for them.
Will there be fees for these activities?
Yes, we'll take and we'll address those fees once we actually take rolling out new programs. Currently, we would operate under this current fee program that we have until we know exactly what we're offering.
I understand this was supposed to get to the county commissioners yesterday, but did not. It's supposed to go to the county recreation advisory board tomorrow.
So they were supposed to, so the county advisory board for the recreation was supposed to have met last week. They had some interview stuff that ran over, and so they didn't, it got too late in the day, so they didn't actually get to meet. They want to take it to their recreation board before it actually goes to county commissioners. They'll meet with the recreation board tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., and then it'll go to the commissioners in their next month meeting.
Okay. Well, I would suggest then we see what they do, then react to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
How much, who, where, and how much use of the fields would you have input on, since they're going to be running everything?
They'll run the athletic programming.
So everything's got to go through there?
So they'll handle registration and everything, they'll handle maintenance of the fields, they'll handle all of that. Glover Park will, they'll run most of it. We will have access to it, so if we want to hold concerts or community days or anything like that, we have access, and we just need to get on their calendar as soon as...
They can't deny us to use our own people.
As long as, as long as we're not trying to bump into whatever they have already scheduled. Like, I mean, they can't have booked a tournament there and, yeah, I come in a month before and say, hey, I want to use this, yeah.
Who's going to pay the electric bill and the water service?
That's all under negotiation, but currently, the way that it's set up is, in their other interlocal agreements, they pay for all the maintenance.
Okay.
Town would pay for capital.
How much is it going to affect your staff as it is now?
You're going to take and you're going to look at a maintenance worker. And currently, in the proposal, the, our current maintenance worker would be afforded the opportunity to go to the county.
So you're talking about you and one other?
Yeah, it'd be me and one other full-time staff. So it would be what we were before we had a maintenance worker to help us cut grass and everything like that.
So there is no savings to the town. The budget of around 300,000 would stay the same.
Yes, ma'am.
So just to clarify, this last page here where it gives us all of these examples of things that would possibly be offered for programming, these are things that have come about from different forums and public hearings. This is not just thought up.
No, this is things that have come, that have been mentioned.
Citizens have requested.
Yeah, that have been mentioned. In this, we'll also have to take and be able to secure indoor space. So we'll be looking for, yeah, finding that.
And as far as athletics, oh, I'm sorry, Louise, as far as athletics go, you are constantly in direct competition with the county, correct?
We are constantly in direct competition with the county. We have to have a standalone league currently, because our fee schedule doesn't match their fee schedule. And what you see is that we do pretty good in the little kids. Once we get up over the age of seven, we have groups that are grouped together. So currently, in softball, we have seven-year-olds playing with 12-year-olds in softball, and we have two teams a season, so they just play each other constantly. We also have the same type of thing once we get up into upper levels of soccer, upper age groups of soccer, and baseball.
What did you have in mind for securing indoor space?
Looking to rent to start with. So yes, express need.
Where?
Where?
Can that be revealed?
I don't know.
Okay.
Well, we were looking across the street here at Gary Glitson's building, and Marguerite and I have gone in there and looked. It's a wide-open space. It's available, it's been newly renovated. It's got plenty of spillover parking with the library parking on this side. So that's kind of what we were looking at. We were looking at other areas that were large and open, but they didn't have air conditioning in them, and by the time we have to put air conditioning in them, or a heating system. Now, that doesn't mean that's the only place we look at, obviously, but that's what comes to mind.
It's most ideal when you're taking and looking at Parks and Rec space, though, to be within walking distance of communities that need services and be within walking distance of school.
So is there an agreement here? Okay, we get out of it if you don't like it after a year.
The interlocal agreement, we're not there yet, but in the ones that I have read, that they have with Spring Hope and other municipalities that they also work with, it's about a five-year term, that you come back to the table at the end of five years and decide, is this working, is this not working, type thing. But they have language, and that would, that would need to be drafted as we move forward.
One of the other things we're looking at, too, is next, next week, holding a public forum for the Nashville community right here and get feedback from them, so that when, if the county does give a thumbs up on this idea and it does come back to the council, you will, we will already have heard from the citizens of Nashville if this is something they would like to see us pursue or not.
I do think we need to open up to the citizens and get their input first.
Yes.
It's their money.
Marguerite, would your office remain out at the park?
No, I would move to where, wherever we secure indoor space.
Okay.
That would be the plan.
Last year, didn't we invest about 25,000 in HVAC out there?
We have not done any HVAC work. You've taken, you've budgeted, but we have not spent that money to do any HVAC work yet.
So that is, has not been used?
Yes, no, it has not been used, no, ma'am.
We didn't do it.
We didn't do it, okay.
No, we haven't done it.
Does it need to be done?
Excuse me?
Does it need to be done?
Depends how you use the building.
The county can decide if they want to do that. Depends on how, yes, depends on how, if it's being used as a full-time office by a full-time employee, then yes, an HVAC would be great, but, you know...
It depends on whether it's hot or cold.
Yes, exactly. Right now, it's pleasant, so, yes.
Right.
Yeah. So we'll hold the public forum then, next Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. here.
Okay, let's see what the county tells, and see what we can work out.
Now, when we talked at the Parks and Rec Board meeting, though, we talked about getting the word out and publishing maybe in the graphic. Do we, have we done anything as far as letting people know that this meeting might occur? Can we?
Marguerite?
I'm going to defer to Amanda, but yes, I sat down with Amanda on Tuesday and talked to her, but I think there will be a newspaper article in the paper tomorrow about it. And I have a Facebook post ready to go, but I needed to talk to y'all first before I could actually...
I just want to get enough bodies in here to give us the consensus that we need.
Yes. And it's ready to go on our website, too. I just have to hit the publish button.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All righty, number five, town manager report. Randy, I'd like to compliment on the weekly reports you sent us.
Thank you.
They're very thorough and explain many things that we need to stay up with. So what else have you got for us?
Well, we had staff meetings today, and all the department heads were reporting. I did mention in my weekly report that we were looking at new IT services. To be very honest, we've been getting by extremely reasonable IT, but we are in a very vulnerable state. So today, Samantha and I reviewed the procurement requirements that the state of North Carolina requires for IT services, and we did confirm that we are able to ask IT companies for proposals, review them, and then go with one of them. And as I had mentioned in my report, the company VC3, which operates in South Carolina and North Carolina, comes highly recommended by the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and the towns that loophole and got their input back from whom are using them are very, very happy and very pleased. One thing from the police standpoint, this company's technicians and IT engineers are all, I forget the exact certification term, JT, they use, but FBI certified.
True fact, you're authentication to the FBI.
Which is required. I don't know if our current IT provider is that, we've never asked them the question. So today, Sam and I pulled the trigger, and we signed that contract with VC3, so we will be starting with them here very soon.
Good. Okay. Other news?
I think that's all I got.
Okay. Okay, time for comments. Mr. Tyler?
I want to congratulate all those that won, Mayor, Ms. Hitten, Ms. Hobbs, that won yesterday. I want to congratulate you, and I can honestly say, this was the, this was the cleanest election, as was alluded to earlier. There was no mudslinging, there was nothing, everything was up and up. It was a very, very well-run, very well-run race, and I congratulate all the winners. And I've enjoyed working with you, Charles, and let's see, who was to, and I've enjoyed working with you, Mayor, and hope that working relationship continues on with our new group of people up here on the council. And I would also like to add, our next agenda meeting, which is, as you mentioned earlier, will be the Thanksgiving week, if we ought to have it.
No, it's going to be December 3.
Okay, because I would not be here in case something comes up. I'd be gone that entire week.
Okay, good. Have fun.
That's all there.
Mr. Tyler, other comments?
Yes, sir. First of all, I'd like to thank all the citizens who came out and voted. Wish there'd been a lot more, no matter how it went. We still have a hard time getting a good, solid base of voters during this off-election season. And I think that's kind of a bad thing to happen. I congratulate our new mayor, Brenda Brown, Ms. Hitten, who ever turned to council, and Ms. Hobbs. I would like to thank everyone who voted for me, and those people who didn't vote for me, I still thank them if they voted at all. Next thing I'd like to thank, and just make this comment, is it's been a pleasure working with the staff of the town of Nashville. I would put our staff up against anybody else's in any area around here. They're very knowledgeable and hard workers, very industrious. And I hope that we'll always remember them as we go forward. And it's been a pleasure, most of the time, during the past 12 years of serving on town council. Hasn't always been easy, but it's been busy. Once again, thank all of you.
Thank you. Zen?
I appreciate everyone's support, and I look forward to continuing to serve on the council. I thank you very much.
Ms. Kate?
I wanted to congratulate Julie on her certification. Wonderful work, and thank you for all the hard work that you've done with the MSD. I really appreciate it. I would, too, like to congratulate all of the victors from the race. It was definitely a clean one, I think. I was proud to be a Nashville citizen, and yes, we do need to work on our voter turnout, but we did get some, some good numbers. And I wanted to thank Charles and the mayor for their service, their dedicated service. It's been very nice working with you all, and I think that is it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, it's come down to this, we've got one more meeting to go to start, but somebody else will finish it. That'll be December 3, which we'll get organized and move on with that after time. And I'd like to thank everybody who voted for me, everybody who came out to vote. I talked to Lynn this afternoon, she's down with laryngitis or something apparently caught yesterday out there in the elements.
Just one around.
Well, he brought his stuff with him. Okay, but all that said and done now, we'll move on, and we'll regroup again on December 3. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded. Then moved and seconded, we adjourned. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, any cases that would say yes?
Yes.